Before the storm always makes me nervous. We're in the right place.
Sorry, I'm in my car driving, so I'm not going to answer much, but I'm here.
This makes me feel better knowing I'm in the right place.
I know, right? I was like, yay, he's on, so we're good.
I don't know.
It's good. Hopefully it'll go okay tonight. We'll see.
There is the sheriff.
Excellent. All right.
You are now on.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and bring our city council meeting to order for this December 16th, 2024. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's do roll call here real quick. Counselor Winter is en route. Counselor Cuthbertson has a family emergency. Everybody's okay though.
I'm here. I'm here on Zoom, but I'm on my way.
Okay, yay, we'll be here. We're not going anywhere for a little bit. Okay, Counselor Lindner.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Rich.
Here.
Counselor Myers.
Here.
Okay, everybody else is here and Counselor Butler is on Zoom. Okay, before we do public comments, I want to read something really quick and then we'll get moving from there. A reminder to everyone, we observe professional decorum during all city council meetings. That's it. Who would like to read two dot one for us?
I'll go for it.
All right, thank you, counselor.
The public comment period is designed to gain input from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue between the council, staff, and any person making a comment. Any person who raises a question during public comment should rest assured that the city staff is making a note of your question, and the council and staff will work together to identify the appropriate city official to follow up with you directly.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments this evening? Roger, you want to go ahead? We should probably have your mic on.
I'm getting to the point, I don't move my mic.
Okay, well, it's just being that.
Doesn't hurt.
That parent in me triggered my call.
I'd like to comment on the draft resolution authorizing the transfer of title for the library to South Benton Community Enhancement. And I recognize this is a statement of more or less aspiration on the city's part, but I consider it to be an obligation on SBCE once we accept the library. So I have a couple of things to comment in that regard. The first is, this is looking at transfer on January 1st, which we are in agreement with if we can get the insurance policy in place at that time.
Right.
And I talked to Dorothy today. She's been in contact with the same carrier the city has, and she hasn't gotten a response yet. So that's an outstanding issue. And then the other one is an additional insured for the city under SBCE obligations. Once we get that policy, I think we're fine with that for the first six months, but which I understand is the reason for that. So I would request that that be changed to expire at the end of the transition period.
I'm sorry, can you clarify?
Under SBCE on the second page.
Oh, second page.
So it's.
So that there's a, so that it has a drop off date? Is that what you mean?
Right.
Okay.
June 30th as well.
My experience with those riders is you have to pay for them.
And yeah, we wanted to give you something in writing, just because I know that there's still steps, but wanted to give you something in writing as to our intent and everything.
Yeah.
Much appreciate that. It's very clear. It's very complete, and those are very minor issues.
Thank you, Steve.
Having no gap in the insurance for the building, that we would not be able to act on the acceptance of the deed until we have that insurance covered.
Mm-hmm. Understood. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go ahead and move on then. We are on two staff reports. Eric, you're up, sir.
Fantastic. You should have the report there in front of you. I don't know if you have any questions or not while you're looking at it. Counselor Rich, I was gonna get down there this evening. I have a frisbee. And if I'd had two, I'd have hit, I'd have hit Council Linder on her front porch last night as well, yeah.
That was us yelling at you.
I heard you all out there. That was awesome. That parade was so much fun. We look forward to it every year. The log truck, the log truck was amazing. I'm telling you, it's one of the coolest. But I still have, one of my favorites is gonna always be that giant Grinch on the sheriff's office side by side. That was so big. I did not know how big that was until I saw it. I appreciate you for letting us be a part of that. That was cool and just seeing everybody out there is awesome. But we'll have more candy next year. We ran out of candy way too soon.
That's a good problem.
I will plead guilty. We started throwing boat whistles. And I give a little toot toot and behind me could hear a bunch of kids blowing the whistle. So I was like, oh, that's cool. I apologize if there's any issues at school today.
Thank you for participating again.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us. It's cool.
What is, on December 16th, two hours Monroe expat? What does expat mean?
Extra patrol.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you.
That's just the direct patrol and we're down there.
Okay.
Typically, they'll type it in their computer versus notifying dispatch, so.
Got it.
And it looks like you're getting into the, the cold rainy months when there's a little bit less activity as far as people wandering around and getting into trouble.
Well, and we had a week of Thanksgiving in there as well, if you think so. Just a little less activity, but, but still plenty of, plenty of stuff to do down there and.
Well, it looks like, yeah, it looks like there's definitely a lot of contacts and stuff like that going on.
Plenty of stuff to do. I, I saw the radar trailer last night. I actually saw a couple of folks hunkered behind it for a windbreak. Why not? We are gonna keep it down in the Monroe area, though. It's gonna move, it moved today, I think, back over to territorial if I'm not mistaken.
Awesome.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Interesting about the harassment at the coffee shop.
Yes, I saw that.
Curious.
Yeah, if I recall, there was an individual that had been in town for a short stay, and he was causing some problems all over down there. And I think ultimately his goal was to maybe get to Eugene, and I think we helped facilitate that.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I did see them out there talking to her because I went to go get a coffee in the morning when he was out there talking to, talking to him, I don't know. But yeah, thank you guys for everything you do, and I'm glad, glad to hear the trailers coming back down. I think that makes people a lot more aware of their speed coming down the hill.
You can certainly tell when it's been out there because then we'll put Toby or somebody out there and Lieutenant Bottorf will just see the front end of the car is just anchors as they see it. They know what the speed limit is, right? Let's be honest. So they're trying to, they're just trying to be sneaky, and when they see a deputy, they, they about put a gouge in the roadway, so.
Awesome. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
Uh-uh. I apologize for not getting down there. Steve in the room?
Yes, I am. I.
Hello to Steve. I hadn't talked to him in a while, and I'm just glad the boy's still around. That's all.
Any update on the, you said that there was like some traffic cams going in in the county.
So I know that the city of Albany has a traffic camera going in, north, near North Albany Middle School, North Albany Elementary there on North Albany Road and West Thornton Lake. That's slotted to happen at the beginning of the year, but I don't know the specifics on it.
Okay.
But I had been meaning to catch up with one of our commissioners to discuss it. And of course, tomorrow Commissioner Ogieros retirement party is after session, and I hope to see some of you there as well. But yeah, so I'm kind of waiting for the transition and then I'll start building inroads with Commissioner Shepard and continue with Commissioner Malone and Wise. And we'll see how that goes, but I, I think you know my stance on that. It's.
Oh, I know. I just, I'm just curious as far as like the, yeah, what, what, you know, kind of the result of that. Because it's kind of new anyway in the state. It wasn't previously allowed other than in like, I think in certain periods of Portland or something, right?
It's been kind of a metro area specific project.
Yeah.
They're, they're expanding out. I'll be curious to see. I know the city of Albany is expecting to receive a pretty significant windfall from that through the municipal court. But again, I just feel like it's terribly impersonal, and you're just, I, I wanna, I want that face to face. I want my deputy staff face to face interaction with folks. So that's just my opinion, but yeah, I'm one guy.
Also, we just want people to stop speed. I mean, that's why we asked for the trailer to come down because it seems to help some because they'll see it and realize they need it.
See awareness.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
I totally, I understand that side of the coin as well, too, and then I wish I could have more deputies on staff so we could, you know, commit to having a traffic team and.
We understand totally. Thank you.
Sheriff, did you say Commissioner Ogierro is retiring?
Yes.
Oh, good for her.
Yeah, she's, she's retiring after two terms, and so her retirement party is tomorrow at noon. It's a public retirement deal up in 4,300 Research Way at noon. So if you're around. Corvallis, I would encourage you to swing in and at least, at least give her a soft goodbye. She's, she's a little soft-hearted, so she's a little.
She is, yeah.
She's a little, she's a little torn over the whole deal, so.
I bet. Oh, she's sweet.
She's amazing, and she, she's made me a better, better professional as well because she, she knows a lot about a lot, and she holds your feet to the fire. And if you don't know what you're talking about.
I used to volunteer with her when she was the executive director of Mary's River Watershed Council, and she was the ED there. So that was like 12 years ago, probably in Corvallis. She's a wonderful person. Anyway.
My, my son has picked her brain. We're off topic here. My son's picked her brain simply because he's doing rangeland management, and he studied, he's, he's heavy into the fisheries portion, and he worked for the Confederated Tribe over the summer. And so he, he got, he picked her brain about a lot because she used to be salmon, big into the fish, fish. So yeah, she's super, super great person. So we're gonna miss her.
Definitely.
All right, any other questions?
No, thank you so much for.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff Van Arsdale.
If we don't see you by the end of the new year, happy new year. Thank you. Right, we have now the city administrators' report.
So this is a short month for me, and the week of Thanksgiving, I had health issues, as I think I let you know. So that was pretty much a wash. that was pretty much a wash for me. The last two weeks, if you can see all the resolutions ordinances. In addition to three planning decision letters, that is what's taken up the majority of my time. Plus we helping Dawn finish up the audit as well. So that's what I've been doing. I don't know. I'm trying to think of I last week I spent I was up and spent half a day each day with Chuck Cross in the water plant, bringing him up to speed on the way I want things done over there. So he's much more competent now, I think, in in doing the basic operations. Right at the first of the year, I'll go back again with him. And if he's ready, then I'll have Chuck Schultz, our DRC, sign off and have Mayor Sheetz sign off on it. And he'll become a can become an operator for the plant.
Awesome.
So with that means he can come in at eight o'clock on his own. And we have a protocol that we use. They have to basically let me know that they're in the plant. They have to let me know what the startup is. They have to send me pictures of their logs as they progress along the way. And then I will release them when I think everything is running the way it's supposed to. So that's the same protocol I set up with Mark several years ago, is the same one with Chuck. And it works well in that area. So that that's looking forward to that. And for the record, Counselor Winters on board. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir.
But that's what I've been up to. It's been just a very busy two weeks trying to get ready for council. We, as you can see, there's a lot of resolutions and a lot of activity, paperwork administrative and also training going on at the moment with City Hall. So and that's my report.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve?
Definitely a busy month.
Any update on the stuff with Gomberg?
And Representative Gomberg was sent a letter to his chief of staff, who finally did receive it, by the way. It was not delivered when I sent it. And I think that is because and so Counselor Linder also had issues receiving
Yeah.
emails. And what it turned out to be was our DNS had changed.
Oh, okay.
Had to be updated. So some emails that were latent in the system because not all DNS servers update at the same time. However, I had several emails and I know I don't know if anyone received the so Counselor Richard, you received the attachments from the previous personnel. I said I would send that out and I went
I think
You did that. Mayor Sheetz, it's you.
I think so. I need to double check.
And I know Counselor Linder did not. Several other people had not either.
Okay.
So we did send a letter off to Rep. Gomberg, who was gonna make a phone call on our behalf.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're hopeful, hopeful, hope.
Hopeful that the DEQ is
hoping we can get that penalty.
On a similar DEQ thing, we have a new regulator, DEQ regulator, not TMDL. This is for our lagoons. Pouring over all of our records. And so Chuck and I have been working through that. They found all sorts of things, but the problem is, is that some of it is appears to be data entries that were not correct. So we're just sending back and forth the things that we need to. There is one item on there. We're supposed to be apparently our permit says we're supposed to be sending them sludge samples every year, sludge surveys. That has never been the case. We did. They did tell us we needed to send them one as part of our permit condition, which we did in 2023. We paid $4,000 to OAWU to specifically come and do that. We sent them that report. The new regulator is claiming this is every year, which seems very unusual to both Chuck and I. So Chuck, because he is our DRC
Yeah.
and responsible for those things is helping us resolve that. So I'm just an update at this point. I'll give you, well, no more in January, but we've been both of us. Another thing in the last two weeks.
When you say unusual to Chuck, that Chuck Schultz from Harrisburg?
Yes.
So he's, I mean, he's like a committed dedicated water guy. And he if he thinks it's strange, that's
He thinks it's yes. So he is the one responsible for those reports and all those things that go in.
Yeah.
And so he's working with me on that.
Got it. Thank you.
Did the new regulator show any kind of documentation of this requirement?
No, we it's apparently in our permit, I have I've looked through it and I only remember only see the one instance of it. So Chuck's asking her what the issue is. We did submit one of them.
Well, I mean, I'd like to have the new regulator say point out right where
Yeah, where it is. And Chuck has looked at it as well. But I'm gonna let Chuck do it at the moment because he is the one who is legally responsible for our work. And I'm getting him information from our logs and records. We keep everything we do is logged. So
Mullen, if we have to do it annually, we have to do it annually. I mean
But I want to know.
But yeah, it should be in writing and not not telling us after the fact and then trying to find us for
I do have the original. Well, I have the original report when the people came out before they gave us the permit. And I talked with them and Chuck talked with them. And that's what we heard. And we have that in writing from them that we owed them a report. So we sent them the report. A is one. So we're working on that.
If it's not so specific, I I could see a legal way that we can resist.
Well, yes, this is it's
Life for hard for us. I understand that.
We we I think usually the how these things resolve themselves is you point out the inconsistencies and then they say, okay, well, we need this report.
They clarify it.
They clarify it, then you just make sure it gets
They just need to rectify their instructions.
Right. Again, the state of Oregon, and this was an edict that came down about three years ago with the former governor. Each program in the state of Oregon is mandated to find people for anything. And it's up to us to refute it. So bigger cities that have lawyers and attorneys and and bigger staff could deal with it. For small cities, it becomes an issue.
So she basically made it, you're guilty until proven innocent?
That's how they work. And that is that that is just how it works.
Wow.
I could believe that of the former governor.
And the current governors
As well.
As well. But that's you can't fight City Hall, right? Oh, that we are City Hall.
Any other questions? No? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine. It will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request. In which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If any item involves a potential conflict of interest, council members should so note before adoption of the consent agenda. A motion to accept the consent agenda is appropriate.
In addition to your packet here, we had, because it's the short period, we have several additional invoices that came in today. And so that is when those happen, I attach them separately so that they aren't just slipped into the agenda packet because I've already sent it to you and you for review. So these just came in. And so that's why they're separate. But these are also under consideration in the consent agenda this evening.
As far as the the audit fees or that we had progress payment on, is that in line with what we budgeted for? Audit fees, it seemed high, but
It it is. And it is in line. We have spent our budget amount for that. But it is high because it it there was a lot of they had to do that. They felt they had to do a lot of moving around of things to make it. When we moved our funds to streets, separated everything, it wasn't the same for the previous year. So they have to go through and make sure that all the funds and monies are put in the right buckets.
I have a comment on some of the old business that was recorded. I'm sorry, I was just going through the are we we're doing approval, right?
Yeah, so it's
Yeah.
And the financial stuff.
To to you're shifting to the minutes.
Yeah, yeah. I just noticed that SBCEA was referred to as SPCA throughout. And that's probably no, no disrespect. It's probably a minor error in our acronym recording, but we probably we might want to correct that in the minutes. And it could be because when we were speaking last time, I said SPCA too quickly and it sounds like SPCA instead of SBCEA. So I don't know if we want to make sure that that's corrected or if it's not a big deal. Like, I'm looking at page eight of 11. My guess is the the recording equipment just picked up SPCA instead of SBCEA.
Well, that and probably because Misty is doing the minutes, she doesn't know that it's SBCEA.
Oh, got it. Okay, got it. She's unfamiliar with the acronym.
She's unfamiliar. So I'll let her know.
Okay, cool.
You can certainly approve the minutes. What the proper thing to do was approve the minutes with the understanding that SBCEA is SBCEA.
Yeah.
So moved.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion? Is that right?
Yes.
So
So I'll second it.
So Counselor Counselor Winter approved moved to approve the consent agenda and Counselor Myers seconded.
With, of course, the understanding that
SPCA is really SBCEA.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, any comments or questions before we vote?
The costs. So that we don't get surprised with another thing to move money around for.
We will probably need to move some money around when we meet in January or February.
Okay, let me know when you guys are ready.
I'm ready. Ready.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Are you ready? Not ready to vote yet.
I thought you were asking for
You're done reading.
Yes and yes.
Everybody else. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and vote. Counselor Cuthbertson, can you still hear us? Counselor Cuthbertson, can you still hear us? Okay, we'll just go ahead and we'll move forward. Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Rich?
Yes.
Counselor Wood?
Yes.
Counselor Linder?
Yes.
And Counselor Winter?
Yes.
Great, thank you. We'll with Counselor Cuthbertson.
Well, we'll note that is that she is online, but was unable to respond.
Difficulty, she was unable to vote.
All right, let's go ahead and let's move on. Okay, we're at the five dot one. I have a statement I would like to read, the council statement. So give me a moment. Okay, this is the city council statement for December 16, 2024, city council meeting. On November 20, 2024, Monroe City staff members experienced a stressful encounter at City Hall with a Monroe business owner who was upset about a perceived lack of communication from the city regarding urgent stormwater related work near their business. This work this work required city employees to access a fenced off area behind their business on November 19, 2024. This encounter resulted in city council members asking clarifying questions during the November 25, 2024 city council meeting, which were then perceived by city staff as being unsupportive of how city staff conducted their work. The Monroe City Council wishes to clarify the following. The council will always and has always supported the city's handling of its interactions with community members. The council supports city staff's handling of the stormwater work referenced above. The council supports the staff's handling of the stressful negative interaction that occurred thereafter. The council does not support mistreatment of Monroe's employees. Since our obligation is to serve Monroe residents and business owners, members of the city council are encouraged and even expected to ask clarifying questions concerning events that they do not witness themselves. We must ensure that our constituents, the residents of Monroe, whom we are elected to serve as well as business owners, are provided with excellent service and that they are heard and responded to in a timely manner. That said, when seeking to understand the more subtle and complex details of strange situations involving the public, city council will strive to ask questions pertaining to city policy, i.e. ordinances, to determine if there may be room for improved relations with residents and business owners. If it is determined there is room for improvement, the appropriate city committee will be engaged to review and update city policy accordingly. The city council has full trust that the city administrator conducts his staff appropriately and recognizes that the city administrator is the sole supervisor of city staff. In other words, the city council does not have any direct influence over Monroe staff members or the ways in which they perform their work. City council has the obligation of serving Monroe. However, we must also ensure that we are demonstrating fairness and that we support city workers. To defuse future inevitable crises and conflicts with the public, we appreciate grace and patience as we determine and collab in congleration with the city administrator, what the city's obligations to residents and business owners are per city policy.
Yeah, I'll follow up with that a little bit. I think in the meeting that was referenced in the beginning of the statement on November 20. I think everyone who was attending that meeting kind of remembers the tension in the room. I and and we were thinking that we were doing our best by asking follow up questions of Steve and to try to understand the situation. And our intent was good. And perhaps we and now we know that we probably should have been asking questions about policy specifically, rather than what did this employee do or what did they not do? So it's hard. It's difficult to separate at the time. And we didn't know to separate those two things at the time. But going forward, if we encounter a similar situation, we should focus on policy and trust that Steve is working with the people's side of it. Any comments or thoughts about that?
Questions?
Okay.
I agree.
Cool. Steve, any thoughts or questions about it? Anything we can clarify?
Well, the ordinance, we are working under an ordinance that allows us to do this.
Yeah.
City ordinance. There are other ordinances we have that require us to make, we cannot go on people's property, like abandoned cars is an example. We are not allowed to go on abandoned cars without their owner's permission.
Yeah.
Same law enforcement, for that matter. First, things of that nature. For stormwater and sewer and water, those are all things that are allowed by ordinance and by all ordinances. There's no difference between us and any other city. Now, having said that, our staff will if it's not urgent, if it's nothing that of that moment, then they will always make an effort to contact the person or come back and say, hey, look, we need to go back here and do this. And that does happen frequently.
And it should.
And it does, because that's just the right thing to do. We folks know us and we know them. So it's just a matter of common courtesy to to do that. In this particular instance, the property owner was not in their business. And we need to do something urgent. It was only for a few, really, literally a few seconds.
Right.
So we got the information we needed and backed off. Now, the next day, the intent was to let the person know what's going on because we needed to park equipment in front of their area. However, the individual did not let me. Well, my staff were contacted and then my staff out of fear called me and I talked to the individual by speakerphone and did not let me get a word in edgewise either. Otherwise, you know, I would have tried my best to defray the situation, which is not my first time trying to defray situations. I'm pretty good at getting folks calmed down. So was Mark. You know, we we work really hard to do that. So on occasion, this happens. I I, you know, is it a crisis? Not necessarily. I was talking to, I gave Counselor Linder, I took a class in crisis management, a graduate level class, and they talked about para crises. A para crisis is really social media. It's it's was it the term was born out of the social media where things get on social media and then all of a sudden you have to make a determination right away whether this is something that is urgent and critical that you need to deal with. whether this is something that is urgent and critical that you need to deal with or is it something you just sit back and let, you know, it just kind of go away and take note of it. It's not an easy situation. In ti- in years past, you sit down in your war room privately and work it through. Hey, the media is saying something about us, you know, and the New York Times, what are we gonna do about it? With social media, it's out in the public and that's what your issues are, is that it is in the public. It's in the wild, as they say. And so how do you make sure that you get the right information to them? The recommendations are is to immediately say, hey, this is what occurred. This is why we did it and I, we encourage you to come talk to the city administrator or come talk to council, which is what the answer is that we give folks is that if you have an issue with the policy, city hall doesn't make policy. We just simply try to do our best to deal with it. And if there is an issue, and sometimes there is, we work it out as a team and then I report it to you and say, this is what's going on. This is why we're doing it. Or if this happens again, we're gonna have to trespass somebody because we cannot have people leaning over counters at other individuals. That's, that's beyond. So it is, it is unfortunate, uh, this whole thing. Now, on a secondary note, same individual this has now, uh, she gave me her, her permits for ASTR and within, uh, the, by the next day it was sent back to her saying, congratulations, you are very first. So, you know, we try again to be very fair and transparent with all the things that we do. And if there is a policy issue, then certainly you're the group to ta- take care of it. That we, city hall does not make, does not make city policy. We abide by the ordinances that that you make or amend, as the case may be.
Thank you. And I, I think I, I want to emphasize that when we are asking our questions, I think we just didn't know what questions we were supposed to ask. And our intents were good. I, I want, I hope that that's clear, that the city council trusts city staff to do what they're tasked to do. We just didn't know that we were supposed to ask what ordinance is relevant to this.
I worked with our staff to go through how it works. We have two folks that have never worked in this environment before. And even folks that do, Mark more or less is aware. Dawn is still learning how, how, who, who has to approve what. You know, she's, you know, focused on her thing and, and so it is in a small town, it is difficult sometimes to figure out how things get taken care of. It takes a while. It takes a few years to figure it out. I think in my comments about hiring a new city administrator or any new staff, yeah, college degree is good and it might shave a year or two off the learning curve, but it takes three to five years. I mean, that's, and I'm gonna say city recorder. If you ask Michelle Eldridge, who's been the Oregon City Recorder Chair and, you know, of the committee, she would say right away, it takes at least five years to get your, to get some level of initial mastery with it and longer to become, you know, to want to know it enough that you, you can start, you know, mentoring and talking to other people. So it's just, there's a lot of things in this world that is very complex. And so I'm trying to work with my staff to get them to understand how things work. And that just because someone asked a question doesn't necessarily mean they're not supporting you. What it means is they're asking the questions they have to ask. In this case, yes, it was always good as a council to focus on the policy. Is this policy that is being followed the correct policy for this town? And then work with it from that, you know, and our policies come from our ordinances.
In this case, based on what you've explained to me about that, the particular relevant ordinance here, it's a pretty standard one for most cities. Like when you need to access urgent utilities, you don't ask for permission. You just, you gotta get in there and fix the thing.
Right. And that's also referenced in, in state statute as well. And it's also referenced in federal statute. We are required to make sure that, you know, for instance, if we believe that someone is dumping grease down their storm drains, we are required to to figure it out, find it and report it immediately. If we don't resolve it, then we have to report it immediately as a violation to the DEQ. If we don't, then we're liable. We will be fined. So that's, that's the, for these regulatory things, that's the, the, um, you know, if we don't do it, as I said, they will find us and, and take care of it in a, in a different way until we get the idea that we have to do it. Again, that doesn't mean we have carte blanche to just traipse around everyone's yards. You know, what it does mean is that if we believe that there is an issue that involves a regulatory within our purview, within our ordinances, then we'll do it and then we'll try very hard to make sure that at least by the next date, someone knows that we've, that you have an issue and we have to, we had to respond to it. Just like if a firefighter or if a policeman had to do something, they always try to make an effort to come back and let you know what's going on.
Thank you.
There may be still confusion with our citizens about whether it's a city infrastructure or whether it's, say, like plumbing on their side of it.
It, it's interesting that most folks do know that. But I think in this case, there is probably more going on than, than what, uh, than what we're aware of.
The one thing that I, I would like to see, maybe we might, might need to update our policy is, for instance, I sprung a leak in my house a time and dug over seven hundred dollars worth of water. And if we were in a water emergency like we were a couple of summers ago, I would think the city would have to shut that off. I wanna make sure we got a policy to cover that.
Yes, we do. Not only that, we also have a policy for a one-time forgiveness of your water leak as well.
I, I knew about that part. I just wanted to make sure that, because if I was gone on a vacation and that was pumping out like that for.
We, we do, and that's part of the emergency. Um, we have a water restriction protocol that Mayor Sheets and I, that one time, we both had to break it out and read it, blow the dust off of it.
Didn't you have a, like, another break where it was on somebody's side and it was dumping out tons of water?
Yeah, we, we've had a couple of those. And we've had one that we felt that they had a leak, but they weren't. They were just bathing their kids fourteen thousand gallons worth of money.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
The renter is no longer there, but.
Yeah, this whole conversation is correct. It's, it's, okay, here, what's our policy? What can we do to adjust our policy to make it better for you, city employees, basically? Or make it safer for you, I should say.
And, and that's it. And one of the things that we identified during this is though, though folks had a, you know, we're clearly city staff and people on Facebook even recognize their city staff. And one of them, they said, looked like Santa Claus and wondered what Santa Claus is doing at Christmas Junction, which could have been a great marketing effort. But, um, you know, one of the things that we have, we have, we're getting is, uh, we'll get it from Office Deep, Office Max is they can make us plastic ID cards with our faces and, and, you know, City of Monroe, Public Works, you know, water. Right, yeah, identification is, is required. It isn't just the logo. We have to, the people have to be identified by name, by picture, that they are authorized individuals. I mean, that, in a big city, that's, that, you know, you wouldn't know. In a small city, most everyone knows Mark, you know? The rest of everyone knows me or knows my car anyway, at least the deputies do. They wave to me every once in a while up Highway ninety nine.
So the badge is we can get to electronic locks.
Get electronical. Yes, I, you, you, you can with the Meg strip on it. You can. We, we had those as well at the council of governments. I got Meg locks. But anyway, that's, that's one thing that we identified from this is to make sure that we are rec- readily recognizable as city employees.
Should we update our ordinance to include that or does?
Be there.
Okay.
Yeah, interesting enough. However, the water and sewer were developed at separate times in our existence and they have duplicate information. So you have to kind of sometimes go to one and then go to the other. And so that whole section, chapter five, needs to be rewritten. So that's next on my list of, of things that would, in terms of ordinances, that absolutely need to be done, is revise chapter five. And make one public, you know, one utility, not a separate, not, not, sorry, you have a chapter that has sewer and water and stormwater, not just one or two for that cover three. And that's how it is right now.
It's always all in ground services.
It is. It's, it is, right now as it is, it is, it is, it's clearly was written ages ago and updated periodically. And so right now, it's almost like, it literally does look like it's cut and paste. So it's a little difficult sometimes to follow through with it. Yeah, well, what I'll do is, um, again, there, there are models, but Harrisburg did a pretty good job. And since Chuck is our DRC and he had a huge input into it, it seems very prudent to utilize what he has. Because it covers all of what we have plus more that we should have, so.
Anything else regarding this particular discussion point before we move on?
Other than I think I missed most of the fun, but.
Hopefully the fun is resolved.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it sounds like everything is working on, you know, moving along, basically.
We'll move on to new business then. He's, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero five and ordinance amending municipal code for penalty fines should be in your packet.
So this is a two-parter. Um, you'll have a resolution later that actually adds the fees, fines to the master list. Uh, what this does is basically takes your penalties and it revises them so that one, it is specifies the, uh, master fee list. Uh, by the same time, it also, um, removes some of the things we had on imprisonment for littering, I don't know, can't remember, or smoking or something. I don't think that, number one, the state of Oregon does not allow that anymore anyway. Excuse me, but, um, it also basically cleans up our penalty list. So that's what this ordinance is. It's basically making sure that each one references the master fee schedule and at the same time cleans up some of the, uh, verbiage that was behind them. This will replace what is currently, uh, under the penalties. Some of the things do not, you know, in terms of, of what we currently had and there weren't bad, um, as we discussed it in the ordinance committee. It's just that these are, um, um, we just wanted to make sure that the master fee schedule was the master list that we could amend and not have to go back and change our ordinances each time. So this is the first one. This actually changes the municipal ordinances that we discussed so that it references the master fee schedule.
So much more efficient to just update.
Yes.
To have a master fee scheduled.
Because those might change.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve or pass ordinance twenty four dash, sorry, twenty twenty four dash twenty five or oh five amending the Monroe Municipal Code to revise chapter instances of penalties and fines.
I'll second it.
Okay, any comments or questions on this before we vote? Are we ready to vote? I'm gonna go ahead and do this. All right, Counselor Winter?
Yes.
Counselor Linder?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson?
Yes.
Counselor Rich? Counselor Myers? Thank you. Right, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero six. This is the first reading and ordinance establishing business permits.
So this is, uh, what you have in here is based upon actually the LOC, League of Oregon Cities Model Code for Business Licenses. City of Harrisburg adopted this, um, same code almost in its entirety. However, this one, uh, it states in essence that there's no fees unless enacted by council. So what you're doing is you're basically setting the baseline for licenses. We're collecting information that is essentially, we're collecting your name, address, how many employees you have. We're gonna be asking questions like, um, you know, what kind of waste hazardous materials are you storing? What kind of waste are you disposing of in the city sewer system? This takes care of our annual, helps us with our annual compliance with the DEQ. Emergency information, like for instance, if you have an alarm company or someone you, you know, because we get calls at city hall um, all the time, actually, um, on things that are happening around a business or can you do this? Well, we need to call Dairy Mart and talk to Cheryl, you know, or somebody. So these are the things that we just want to make sure we have, where what we're doing is collecting a database of information. If the city at some point in the future, which is to enact a fee for this, they may. But at the moment, this is all says that it's when enacted by council. So there is no, no fee associated with this. You're just at this moment collecting information and issuing, you, you have a license. Now, are you all supposed to have a license if you have a business? Yes, and there are exceptions in here. You can, there are exceptions for, you know, if you're a paper carrier, no. Certain things, but otherwise, if you, uh, aren't business, then you apply for a license. Is there a fee? No.
And the application for this business license will be available as soon as.
Well, as soon as it's, so this is the first reading.
Okay.
So it'll have to go to the next council meeting with that, or actually would go to, um, in our case, probably to the next work session. And then with any revisions from that on to council on a second reading, when that is approved, at that point, then there would be an application form.
Got it. So probably January, February is.
And that, yeah, depending on, on any, at this point, this is for comment, this is for revisions. And again, it can be, you can read it and move it to the work session for further discussion, which is kind of what we had done in the past. So you could get a good opportunity to understand it and find out what we're talking about.
I do have a question. What if about businesses we already have in the city that may not, we may not have a business license on the record?
Well, at this point, you, you know, as far as when this is enacted, then all businesses must.
So they're not gonna be grandfathering.
There's no grandfather, at, at least as far as this is concerned. Now, the council can decide that some, but the purpose of this is, is again, is to, is to collect information so that it helps.
For compliance.
For compliance purposes and for emergency purposes within the city of Monroe, so that we know what's going on. This information we collect is not public information.
We need to make sure we promote it that way too.
Right, this is not public information.
That, you know, it's not public information, but it is for public safety.
Right.
You know, we're not doing it to penalize anybody.
No, we're doing it for the purpose of that and that alone. And that is part of the statutes for these actually is that this is exempt from public records law.
Great.
Well, and part of the reason that, as some of us were not wanting a fee was because we want, I mean, we wanna encourage.
Yeah.
Growth.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, exactly. It may come to a time when Monroe is nothing but businesses and you decide that, you know what, we need.
Taking too much time.
Regular, you need, you need compliance people on staff and, um, so, yeah, you might decide this is worthwhile, but.
I mean, I.
Not today.
Really, I mean, if we had some kind of catastrophe, like a big fire at the high school cafeteria that without toxic fumes, if we didn't know who might, how many people are in silo or how many people are in museum and we didn't have those records on city hall, how is emergency services gonna know?
And often they do. That's one of the issues when, um, I spent, had my stint at ATI Millersburg at the research center. You can imagine every, about every hazardous chemical known to humankind was stored there. And I was the contact person. I mean, at the Albany Fire Department, hazmat five had to arrive. I was their main contact. We had a huge book out. The Knox, these books are put in a Knox box, the large one that's the key that has the keys to the building that the fire department has. They're called, it's because the company name is Knox. So they call them Knox boxes. But ours was a huge one that had every single chemical known to mankind in there. But they needed a representative from ATI there to help them determine how many people are inside, where are they at? Because they were scared to death, rightfully so, of fighting a fire in that environment.
And that's why when you go into those, those businesses, you're required to sign in.
Yep, yes.
You know.
Yeah, we had a logbook out front. Everyone had to sign in and sign out.
Every place I went to, I had to log in and log out.
So it's, it's, uh, it's that, we do not yet have that, but this sets the stage for that, you know? And in terms of DEQ environmental, probably the Long Timber is the one that's closest to that. But also our food establishments, they have grease and that type of thing. And what the DEQ is looking at, at what point? And what the DEQ is looking at, at what point do we need to put treat, pre-treatment in?
Yeah.
And then who pays for it?
I would think landscape, excuse me, landscaping businesses who use pesticides or herbicides potentially.
Storing, yeah, right. And in some cases, you want to know that they're storing fertilizer at that type.
At one time, we had a huge chemical fertilizer storage in this town.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Wilbur Ellis.
We had to go through a lot of, that one section of the library, we had to go through a lot of stuff to make sure that it didn't have any residual chemicals in it, because that was the chemical storage building.
Right, oh, really, the depot was, wow. No wonder it looks sand blasted.
Yeah. It was sealed, if I'm not mistaken. So it's, it's good, there's no, no problems, I didn't want to bring up scare. But I mean, I grew up, I mean, my first sales job, I was calling on that place, so.
That's what we all talking about is the, the main purpose at this point. There's no, no intention based upon the last discussion of enacting any fees. That would be up to council at some point in the future, if they so wish to do so.
I would, I mean, there's those guys that rent the truck or that weren't building to do their trucks. I don't know if they're considered a business, but I would presumably want something from them.
We would too, yes, because I have, I have oils and everything else that, that are potentially, you know, those are things, those are things we need to know. Plus, if they have cars and things that have gasoline and all that.
Right. Diesel trucks and stuff.
Right.
Well, we have, we don't really enforce them, but we have peddlers. I mean, there's supposed to be a peddler's license for people that are doing door to door kind of.
Correct. And I do ask, I do remind people.
It's on the books, it's just, I don't, I don't, I don't know that when, when it was last enforced. I mean, it was also put on the books a long time ago, I think.
When Brady Crowson, so her application came in and was approved as well. But that's one of the things that she had to disclose was amusements, because it's in our ordinance as terms of, of, you know, are you going to have jukeboxes and all that, so. And our fees is not very much for that, it's like twenty seven dollars a year, but still, it's supposed to be part of the planning process.
Okay, any other questions on this first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero six?
It'll move on to.
We'll carry on to the work session, then that'll be next year.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty three, a resolution amending the master fee schedule for fines. That will also be in your packet.
So this is the penalties for the master fee schedule, trying to keep this in line with the discussion that we had. So some of these are sliding offenses and based upon the number of offenses you have. And trying to match what other cities have done for similar crimes, if you will, or violations of the ordinance. So in some cases, the traffic rules for, you know, riding your skateboard, that's what our traffic rules are. Might start off at fifteen dollars for the first offense, because it's more than likely going to be someone who doesn't have much more than fifteen dollars. Some folks for the, for the parking, for parking fines, they start off at twenty five dollars, you know? Because that was a big discussion when we did parking, was we're not going to have exorbitant, exorbitant fees for that. Some go up a little bit higher, you can see the, the cars and the band and animals, for instance, go up to the five hundred dollar limit for the fifth offense for that. So the hope is, is that no one would get to that point. Now, in terms of how does that work, at this point, I didn't change the mechanism. Because we haven't even got that far yet. So the mechanism right now is any fines and penalties is something you folks have to decide. Which means that if I get something in that I believe has to be, or a fine, it has to then come to you, probably on something like a agenda item or a separate piece called the docket, just like a court docket, and you will have to administer that. The other part is, is that I've asked Lori Cooper, our attorney, she's getting ready to go on, you know, Christmas, but I want her to give me a mechanism that would send these immediately, send them to the municipal court rather than to you, unless you would like to adjudicate fines and penalties and all that.
No, personal preference, no.
That's, that.
We'd have to wear robes.
Well, and the hope would be that, you know, like, that this basically would give the sheriffs, you know, basically.
Framework.
A framework to say, to send them a.
A citation, at the moment though, it would not go to municipal court, it would come to city council.
Yeah.
So that, that's the next thing is, you know, we're kind of working on this in layers. So the first layer was getting it, everything off to a master fee schedule. The second part was to make sure the penalties were in line with having it that way, so that we reworded them. The third one, the third mechanism is getting the sheriff to write the citations and end up in municipal court. They can certainly write a citation right now, and we can certainly send it to municipal court. But I, we need to change, so I need, I'm asking our attorney to give me the verbiage to change the last remaining thing. So our municipal code is in line with us doing that. Because it's not consistent throughout. I remember our code was written in, in years when this was a very small town and it was run that way. There was no municipal judge, we.
Well, and they had a sheriff, right, and, and, or not a sheriff, a police.
For a while, I mean, that was Frank Fair, correct? But before that, who did we have? Yeah, see, I don't think we had anyone, I think we relied on the county at some point before. And then we went to, they didn't like that, so they went to a junction city.
He was doing it for a little bit.
Right.
We had kind of de facto police here, we had a city Corvallis Police Officer living here in the eighties. And then, of course, a Benton County Sheriff Stephanie lived here until he got too many calls at home.
Right. So anyway, we, we, now that we do have consistent law enforcement, it would be nice to be able to have them write the citations for everything. And then move it to the municipal court so our judge can, can handle it.
I make a motion, we pass resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty, or dash twenty three, a resolution amending the master fee schedule to add a section for fines as prescribed in the Monroe Municipal Codes.
I'll second.
Hey, any other comments or questions on this resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty three?
It looks like what basically kind of what we discussed at the work session.
I would still like to see some jail time, but I mean.
We'll send them to your house. All right, let's go ahead and vote, councillor Myers.
Yes.
Councillor Rich.
Yes.
Councillor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Councillor William.
Yes.
Councillor Lindner.
Yes.
And councillor Winter.
Yes.
Okay, next up is rooted here. Okay. Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four, a resolution establishing a lien amount for the property at nine eighty Commercial Street.
House closes on the twentieth. So at this point, you can see that we have fines and penalties totaling two hundred and twenty six thousand thirty two dollars and sixty cents. I need authorization from you in order to put a lien on the property. Under one, you note that is blank, that is up to you to decide what you wish to put in there. Whatever you do tomorrow morning will be placed on our dockets and as the dollar amount and the title company will be notified and Don has that all ready to go.
Okay.
So at this point, it's whatever dollar amount you wish us to fill it.
And you say it's actually, there's a sale closing on the twentieth?
There is, it is closing on the twentieth. The title company has been made aware that a dollar amount will be entered.
Wow.
How much is this two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars was the, was it, it was a daily fine, wasn't it?
Right, there was a thousand, the initial fine was a thousand dollars, and I believe we have accumulated just about eight thousand dollars in staff time, court costs, lawyer fees and that type of thing. So the initial fine plus that was about nine thousand dollars. The rest of it was up daily, and this individual, of course, is, has been still renting out for the majority of the time that we've been doing this. So it really is up to you, like I mentioned at the last meeting, you, at this point, you set the bar for how this will, this is the first time that I can see that the city of Monroe has actually done something like this.
We're creating a precedent.
So you're creating the precedent for future activities.
So whatever value we, we set, we have to make sure we have repeatable logic.
Yes, so your, your justification should, we should, you should voice your justification for whatever it is you decide. And to also remember that the individual has twelve months to appeal it. So this money, we may receive the money, if we do it, can, we have to ask to completely, totally set aside and not touched until all legal appeals have been exhausted.
But we only have, what, four days to do it?
But you have four days, at this point, it needs to be done with this evening.
I think, in my opinion, we should just leave it as is. I mean, we, we discussed initially when we did this, that, you know, we didn't want to find him and that he could have gone to court. He's had multiple opportunities to go before the judge to talk to him, to go to the planning commission, which he was instructed needed to happen to either get a variance or some sort of, basically, he was using the proper, property for, for another land use that was not permitted. And so he needed to go through the proper channels to do that and I mean, I, I feel like we've tried to, you know, get them in line with, you know, to do, do it properly. I mean, that, that was the whole goal, and if we, and there has to be, you know, there has to be a consequence to, to decide to opt out.
To do it properly, it was an application for four hundred dollars, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then we go to planning commission.
Correct.
Okay, and that's what needed, that's the normal process.
Right, and that would then it would have become a land use issue, we would have sent out notices to everyone within two hundred and fifty feet.
Right.
They would have had to come to the planning commission twenty days later.
Right.
They would have, we would have had a staff report, we would have had everyone talk about it. And then it would have come to council.
Yeah, because I know that we would have had to allow the.
Variance.
Well, and also the short term rental that was not allowed to.
Exactly, so.
Which that was something we were, we decided we were going to work on.
Anyway.
Making, making a lie, allowed.
Well, he could, he could have done the paperwork and gone through the process. And then after the process is over, go back and we can do the short term rental piece. We could have done all of that.
Can I counter, can I pose a counter argument to leaving it at the current full amount? I, I see this is also a PR issue and we do want to support local businesses. So my suggestion is to reduce it by fifty percent, so about a hundred and thirteen thousand and sixteen dollars and thirty cents. Because we aren't out to punish or be punitive, but we do want to demonstrate that we're serious about compliance. So I, I mean, I completely hear what you're saying, councillor Rich. Also, I just, I am concerned about PR here, and I think also that this still is more than a smack on the hand.
I mean, I guess I'm kind of in agreeance with that, but I'm also in agreeance with Rich, councillor Rich. If we set this, are we set on what we ask for, or can we always reduce it later?
It will probably be, I would, I would have to think that the gentleman would appeal it. And then under appeal, there might be a compromise involved.
So it could get lowered at some point.
This is the lien on the title to close escrow, they would have to send two hundred and
Yeah.
Twenty four. Twenty six thousand dollars to the city of Monroe, you know, as part of the closing to be able to close the.
Right.
So, yes, I mean, he can appeal it and it can change through the appeals process or, or go away completely, or, you know, I don't know.
Well, and the other thing is, should we think about unrealized cost of going through the appeal process that we may have to come up, you know, with cost of that?
If he appeals it, I would assume that the city would give that process, everything that we have, our attorney would, and that the other side would probably then argue why we're wrong. And then they'd settle, there'd be some sort of settlement.
But I mean, we could have additional costs.
We could, but with the settlement would probably take, we would, so let's put it this way, this, they say, well, you, you only owe, you only owe a thousand dollars. Plus your court costs, so nine thousand dollars. They say, nope, no way in heck, we've spent more than that, so you're going to pay our current court fees and everything else. And so it ends up at fifty thousand dollars, right? I mean, that's kind of how, I'm just giving you an example, but that, that's, you know, realistically, that's how it goes.
Do we know how these, are these situations, when they do get appealed? Are they, in just in other cities that you're familiar with, if you are, like, do cities typically leave it at the full amount? And then they expect a negotiation to happen where there's some bartering, excuse me, and then it gets dropped anyway? Is that like a pretty normal process?
They typically will find the, the total amount and then allow the process to work through. And the city gives the opposing attorney during discovery all the information that they have.
Okay.
And then typically, cities don't overly fight it, unless it's really egregious. And I would assume in this case, based upon your comments, that it wouldn't be overly fought. It would just simply be, here's the facts of the case, this is what the situation is. And you tell us what it is that you're after, and then you would need to, you would need to sign off on any final agreement anyway.
Right.
Then knowing that, I think I agree with what councillor Rich said, I think if we leave it at two twenty six, expecting that he's going to appeal within twelve months, then likely that amount will probably drop through negotiation and a settlement.
And I would expect him to be trying to appeal it sooner than later.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Especially if the house is closing.
I feel like the, the laws are written as such, and also this individual has done nothing but like, continue to do everything that we, you know, not only did they not want to come and comply, they wanted to continue doing as they pleased.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's a consequence for that and, you know.
Yeah.
I, I think it's also important to note that there were some safety issues involved in that whole thing. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't necessarily that we were out to get anybody or anything like that. There were some serious safety issues with the way that the building was being used, and that was never addressed because it didn't go through the proper system.
Yeah.
And so, and we've had that problem in, in other circumstances in the city that, you know, we don't need another job to do, however, we do need to keep our citizens and everybody safe with our, you know, with reporting and things that are going on. And so I think that that's really important to remember here, that it wasn't, you know, it wasn't just about, you didn't do what the city wanted. Like, people will want to make it be that way, but that it was also, you know, being able to be compliant with safety and doing the things the way that they needed to be handled.
Egress and fire.
I think that's an excellent point, I was skeptical.
To sign off on this fee, but, but bringing that forward, I mean, someone could have lost their life because of his negligence, because we never inspected anything, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that has convinced me, so thank you.
So, well, and it's, it's hard, because as a city, we are also responsible for what happens in our city. So it's just, you know, we're, we have to make sure that we're keeping everybody as safe as we possibly can, so.
Forgotten about rooms with no windows, I mean, if there was a fire, someone could have died, so.
Right, yeah, so.
And the current owner is aware of the fines and penalties he's accrued, so.
We actually posted it, we actually pounded this on the stake in front of his house.
There's been, yeah, multiple notices.
Allow himself to be served, we were told to pound, put the complaint on a stake and pound it. So then he accused us of trespassing on his property.
Has he claimed sovereigns?
So he's, he's aware, and also are the new buyers like aware that there's going to be a lien on the house?
Well, buyer to do due diligence, right?
Well, the lien will be cleared when, with through the, that's why we need to get the information to escrow.
Doesn't transfer.
The closing, the closing may take.
It still stays with the, with the.
Current owner.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
There shouldn't be a lien, if it closes escrow, that means all the funds have cleared, so if there's any. There shouldn't be a lien, if it closes escrow, that means all the funds have cleared, so if there's anything on the title, that's all cleared, if any, if any mortgages are due, if any, you know, all that stuff like gets paid before they allow it to close.
Okay, yeah.
That's on the the escrow folks to make sure that everybody's
Yeah.
Done what they need to do so that it doesn't, it doesn't go to the next party with those liabilities.
I'm in agreement, we've, we've notified him, we gave, gave him every option to play ball with us and go down that path. And he decided to not do that and he knows what the fines and penalties are and because of the safety concerns that were always paramount and for that throughout this whole process, I think we stick with the original fines and penalty amount.
Yeah.
I'm in agreeance, I'd, I'd like to be the nice guy and say, oh, we'll cut it in half, but that's giving away our poker chip, basically.
Yeah.
Well, and, and there is an appeal process.
Yeah.
And so, there is, we're not completely closing the door.
He's not gonna get any residual money out of it unless he gets, gets it resolved anyway, so.
Which, which does make him, you know, it gives us an opportunity to say, you know, in future, you might wanna just come see us.
We know how much the house sold for.
No, I don't. I'll just, I'll mention though what Judge Blake said, he said, hmm, that'll get his attention, I'm sure he'll be working with you shortly afterwards.
That's what we thought.
Okay, I will entertain a motion then on this.
That's what we told you to communicate to Judge Blake, is we just wanted him to, you know, stop messing around, but.
Right, and Judge Blake was, was absolutely, because each time he'd visit us, he'd say, is this guy still renting it out? And I said, oh, let's take a look in the line, so okay, print that out, so I print it out and we keep it in our files.
Wow.
He says, I cannot believe this.
Yeah.
But anyway, there you go.
I'll make a motion to pass a resolution, resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four, a resolution establishing lien amount for property at nine eighty Commercial Street with the amount, the total amount of two twenty six thirty two dollars and sixty cent, sixty cents.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions before we vote?
Just wanna say thanks for the safety aspect, Council Cuthbertson, that was, that's really the most important part of this.
That's, that's really what spurred it, you know, in the beginning, so it's hard, cause after it goes for so long, we kind of lose sight. So it's nice to remember those, all the pieces if we can.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Counselor Winter.
Yes.
Counselor Lindner.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yeah.
Counselor Cuthbertson, Counselor Rich, Counselor Myers. Thank you. All right, next, we have resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations to assist low income residents with utility bills.
Uh, this actually, we talked about this a while back, about having this, um, and since then, we have had some folks wanting to come and actually, and actually have actually, at this point, given us checks for donations, for util, specifically for utilities.
But we don't have a fund established.
We don't have a fund established or really a, a, basically a process to to work with that. So this is an attempt here to, um, put that process together that we, that number one, you authorize us to accept donations, um, we do have a fund for that, uh, but we would keep it, track it separately on our system um, with whatever, and then what I have to do is, in, in, with this as well, is to make sure that there is some administration of that. So we have a record of what we accepted and who, what they want it for, because they can, they can specify it individually. But typically, it goes into a fund and then we establish what low income means. And I would probably follow the same guidelines as the CSC up in Corvallis, since they are the ones that, uh, deal with that. Typically, they also have funds, but they get exhausted almost immediately.
Yeah.
And that's really too bad, um, so for a few months, they have funds from the state of origin, then the funds get exhausted and everyone's just kind of left out, but we do have citizens that would love to donate and actually, at this point, as of today, we have two checks. Waiting for a resolution to accept it into the process.
At some point, would it be possible to have an opt in, like on your monthly bill, uh, five bucks a month contributed to this, for example?
Sure.
That'd be a great idea.
Cool.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Sure, we sure could, as a matter of fact, because as that's part of the administration, we can certainly, um, uh, put that on to the bills and, and make, and onto our announcement saying, hey, you know, and create that opportunity for people to donate. Uh, we have a form from our express bill pay that allows for that and we could, uh, they could donate online.
That's awesome.
Based on some of the feedback that I heard at some of the refuge, the refuse, um, change where we had to up the charge a little bit. We might want to put an option also, whether it's donated for this or donated for refuse pickup, because I know that some of the seniors were complaining about the cost of, of having.
Sure.
I mean, if that's okay with you guys.
I mean, that's.
How would we do that?
No, we can't, because, because we don't own the utility.
Right.
True.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, you're right, Counselor.
If it was City of Monroe trash, then darn it, we could probably do it.
Great idea, though.
Our new employee is a CDL and has driven trash trucks and would love to have the City of Monroe. So I gave him an assignment on their own time to think about how that would.
Would look. I love it.
Yeah, they, they, they have, yeah, that's what they're thinking of, but that, just an aside, that was.
Garbage pickup and meter reading.
We'll see, we'll see what happens, we'll see what their brain processes, yeah. Anyway, at the moment, it is for our utility, so our, our utility bill that we send out.
So this is to be able to accept it and then we would need to do some resolution that, that has a mechanism for or, or, or a policy we need to set to give a mechanism for who qualifies and how to qualify and.
You can do it that way, um, at this, at this point, it gives the city administrator and or their designated shall oversee the administration of it. And this includes determining eligibility criteria recipients, processing applications for assistance, ensuring funds are distributed in a fair and equitable manner, and then you get a report on all that. So basically, this becomes an administrative function.
I just don't know if we, we wanna have a more transparent, like, policy somebody can look to, to say.
It would have to be a process, it would have to be, I mean, there's no way.
Well, no, I know, that way, it, just so that it doesn't seem like, oh, you know, well, Steve's buddy over there, like, he, he always gets his bill comped. Or, or, you know, so you want it to be something to where people, you know, uh, uh, aren't looking, looking at it as a.
Right, at this point, it would have to be something that would be similar to what other cities have done and probably passed by our attorney as well.
Okay.
Just to make sure for that very reason, because if you don't have transparency in it, then you're gonna have problems if the city council, you know, favors somebody. And that's exactly what would happen. At this point, it's for doing that first part, the second part is coming up with an administration of it.
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations to assist low income residents with utility bills.
I'll second.
Wait, any other comments or questions before we vote? Okay, I guess we'll vote. Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Rich.
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Lindner.
Yes.
And Counselor Winter.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have, we have a, I'm gonna say a pseudo resolution that will discuss, um, right now, it's in the package. This is resolution, pseudo resolution twenty twenty four twenty six, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title from the Monroe Community Library to the South Benton Community Enhancement. So I don't know if everyone has read through this, if they know the details on this or not, but take a moment if you would, and then we can discuss.
So is this, this resolution actually authorizes the full transfer, it's not just a resolution of intent, I, I just didn't know, I wanna make sure all the.
So number one says authorization to transfer title, the city council authorizes the transfer title of the Monroe Community Library property
As long.
To the SBCEA via quick claim deed effective January first twenty twenty five, two, conditions of the transfer is contingent upon. And let's see.
Oh, got it, okay, so those, those contingencies are the, are the mechanisms to.
Right, and three, authorization for use of funds, which authorizes me to continue using the library funds once it's transferred for the purposes that we agreed to. And, um, and then gives the mayor and the city administrator, um, authority to execute the quick claim deed and the other documents necessary uh, to make sure that, uh, the, uh, library is transferred over.
And I think that there was, um.
A couple of comments earlier.
Yeah, there was a couple of comments earlier of, of changes, uh, proposed changes, um, C three, um, having, having the end date of.
Expire six thirty twenty.
Six thirty twenty, yeah.
For the writers, because we will more than likely have to add the library to our insurance writer as well to, so that each party is indemnifies each other, because we will be having city staff on the property as part of this agreement through six thirty twenty four.
Doing the mowing and all that, yeah.
Do we need anything regarding the pending insurance on the SBCEA?
Well, I don't think, I think at this point, you are gonna authorize it, but the SBCEA has to accept it with their contingency that they have insurance.
Okay.
So what this does is basically.
Freeze it up for them to make.
Right, it frees it up for them to make a decision.
Remind me, what was the one other note, uh, besides the?
It was, it was.
The initial insurer and then.
It.
Oh, the insurer.
SBCEA is okay with this, with one one twenty four, if insurance can get in a place at, in time.
Okay.
So it's up to them to adopt it if they get insurance, basically.
Yeah.
Correct.
We need to have.
Yeah, but this is us preemptively allowing it to go forward so that we don't have to do an emergency.
Right.
Extension.
Right.
Extension or get together, yeah.
Because the SBCA, they have an agreement now, they signed an agreement with the City of Corvallis and it goes in effect on January first, correct? Okay.
That's awesome.
So the, when you, if you decide to authorize it this evening, so the next step would be for the mayor to actually put this on the agenda if you all think that this is something you can do. And then vote on it, and then at that point, the insurance is one piece and then the city also has to execute an agreement for the janitorial, which is basically outlining what the duties and responsibilities are.
Do we need to do this tonight? Because we're not gonna meet before the first?
If you, if you decide that you do not wish to do it tonight and you wanna table it, then you would need to come up either with a special session or the next regular meeting.
My recommendation is that we do it tonight.
Oh, yeah, no, I think he would, he just meant because we don't have the other piece of the.
The janitorial.
The jan, yeah, the, right.
Depend on whether you want the city, again, this authorizes the city administrator to complete documents. So do you want to see what the agreement would be for the janitorial piece? If you do, then, then you, then.
I mean, I think we kind of discussed that it was similar to what services are going, I mean, basically, it's gonna.
Continue.
We got this to give us.
This is, this is a separate MOU type of thing.
Okay.
So that it's not, you know, again, this is what the city, you know, we're, the basic, what we're trying to do is define what basic services are so that we don't have expectations primarily from the City of Corvallis Library. Okay, the second part of that is like what occurred on Saturday, where the Carushas just came up, wanted to have a birthday party and the library never notified us. So we had another one of those situations, which will be your biggest issue, is the librarian's letting you know when things need to be done. Because we've had a huge headache with that. So you will have to talk with them and make sure that they are on top of, uh, letting you know what's going on because that can run into some real extra costs if you have to pull people in to take care of things.
Plus the liability.
And the liability, that's our biggest thing, is the liability, when you don't know that somebody's in there.
Yeah, we didn't know, nor did they pay a deposit or anything else to defray our costs.
Right, right, because it's extra cleaning.
Exactly, and that's what had to happen today, we had one person in there all day long.
So, resolution twenty twenty four, which is not officially on the agenda yet, but we're discussing, dash twenty six, it's contingent on insurance, the additional insured piece for, you know, both the city and SBCA. And then an agreement, an MOU for janitorial services.
So once you approve it, then we would work out an MOU.
Okay.
And do we need to revise this resolution for that, uh, sunsetting of the additional insured on it?
You would put that as part of your, if this goes up for a motion, then you would add that to the motion.
I, I think we got everything in place, I mean, it sounds like, you know, we're trusting people are gonna work out the final details on this.
Yeah, I mean, it benefits all involved parties, we definitely wanna work toward that.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution.
He's gotta put it on.
Officially on the agenda yet.
I, I recommend that you put it on agenda.
I second that recommendation.
I like to hear from the other city counselors, so.
I would love to see it on the agenda, myself.
Me too.
Okay.
Same.
Counselor Williams.
I'm gonna abstain from this one.
Okay.
So, I just have one other question, so with the MOU that is gonna be for the janitorial, what is the situation with the electrical? Would that, you know, paying the power and stuff like that, is that separate, is that in this or is that, would be that a separate MOU as well?
No, that is not a separate MOU, it is actually, uh, three June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, the city will continue paying for all utilities.
Okay.
Continue paying for the property building alarm service. Pay for any required inspections of the library, fire extinguishers, fire sprinkler systems and backflow prevention devices.
And those are things that we have already.
We have budgeted for. Matter of fact, I think we've already done all of those things anyway, but I decided I better throw those in there, just in case I this one, but I just got the backflow to prevention, uh, bill, uh, last week.
But this way, they have the six months to get the funds going to continue.
And it's detailed as to what. We're paying for.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified.
Yeah, it's two B through B. One, two, three.
One, two and three.
So with the MOU, do we need to have a separate special city council meeting for that?
Unless, if you want to approve it, you may, if not, you would leave it up to the city administrator for the next six months to know that we're our staff will be, will be taking care of certain things.
So I'll ask.
As they have been.
You wanna have a separate meeting on the MOU or you want city staff to take care of it?
I would like the city staff to take care of it personally.
I would, I mean.
What does the city staff think about taking care of it?
That's a great question.
Uh, we're okay with it, um, I, you know, it keeps Ron employed, uh, for one, and I said, he's okay with it. Mark is comfortable with it, because he's the one that kind of, you know, he's kind of the oversee person for all that and he's comfortable, I talk with him extensively with it.
Okay.
Um, they know they're still backup, uh, they're just relieved that there is some finality to it.
Yeah.
So, Counselor Cuthbertson.
Um, I'm, I'm fine with us moving forward, I'd like to see it get wrapped up sooner than later, I just wanna make sure that we've got we're, got our ducks in a row and we know what we're talking about with, you know, and that there can't be any extra things imposed. Do we have anything in place as we move forward with that, if something happens, that they're having extra things and.
During that period between January first.
I, I think, I think that's something that needs to be worked out in terms of, I don't know if you have had anything of, in terms of the rental of the rooms? And what monies that for the rentals, if any?
Cause I think.
Okay, okay, in that case, then we continue working with the city, that, that's what I expected, that's what, you and I talked a little bit about that. So that would be my expectation as well.
Wanna make sure that we're covered, because if there's gonna be a lot of extra things, that will take a lot of extra hours and that's not necessarily what we're agreeing to, so we need to make sure that we've got that piece worked out, am I making sense?
Yeah.
So the MOU would specify that we're, what we, we are gonna be. We are simply continuing what we have been continuing with the same expectations from the Corvallis library system for six months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everybody clear?
Okay, it'd be in the MOU, that was, that's, that's the verbiage that would be in the MOU.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm officially putting resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty six on the agenda tonight. This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of title for the Monroe Community Library to the South Benton Community Enhancement.
I will, I will make a motion, uh, that we pass resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty six, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title for the Monroe Community Library to the South Benton Community Enhancement with the, um, language that Roger had recommended in the, um.
Yes.
Open public comment.
C three being adjusted to have an end date of December, I mean, sorry, June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty five. So that way it has a specified date on there and then also. Specified date on there and then also. Yeah, the insurance.
I will second that motion.
Other comments or questions? And we've pretty much talked it out already.
And I'm very excited and thank you, Councilor Lindner, for all the work that you've done on the council's behalf and. And Mayor Sheets and thank you, Roger, for everything.
Accepted speech after.
You know, for all the work to get to this point, because it's.
Yeah, right.
Been a long time coming.
That's.
Thanks, counselor.
That's my comment.
Yes, thank you. Let's go ahead and vote. Counselor Myers.
Hmm, yes.
Counselor Rich.
Yes, please.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Abstain.
Councilor Lindner.
Yes.
And Councilor Winter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can't have fun.
Thank you, Steve, for your work on this, too. Lots of lots of work. And Sandy, thank you, Sandy.
Okay, we're going to old business now. Library update. I did with a straight face. We have that resolved.
Oh, great. I really didn't want to say.
Refer to Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty six. All right, okay. Uh, city hall proposals. Well, that's something to talk about. And we actually have a document. Here, separate from the package. Proposed costs and all that for the modular. Well, actually, this is the library expense versus the the modulars.
Right, you have, uh, this is very similar, but now you have some updates on it because we are now paying electricity. And the alarm costs. We have also agreed to make any refunds um basically to the insurance. When we cancel our insurance, we'll get a refund of some some amount. I could like to be able to tell you that, but the insurance company is going to because they put all of our buildings under one and they'll have to separate it out. I've asked them to stop doing that. I would like to see by building what they're charging us, but that's how hometown's been doing it. But whatever that is, we will get a refund for it. Then we have the site prep move setup and the lease for three months out of this fiscal cycle. Uh, and then we have our reserve amounts that we have, and you can see we have at the moment. A deficit of eleven thousand nine sixty six at the moment. You asked, we talked a little bit last time, this is what is added as well as the L G I P interests that we've been earning. Don has calculated that through November thirtieth, we get twenty nine thousand ninety eight. That is what we have received in L G I P. Insurance on our reserve funds. So that's bonds, city reserves and S D Cs, not. Monies in general administration or public works, so we didn't touch those. These are amounts that just simply accumulate in in these particular funds. December twenty fourth has not been released yet, but we expect about five thousand eight hundred nineteen. And Don projected thirty three thousand six hundred dollars between January first and six thirty. For total interest of sixty eight thousand five hundred seventeen estimated. That we will have received and it just on our reserve funds, okay? So the idea would be to look at our reserve funds uh in terms of. City reserve funds that are not water or sewer related. That was a comment counselor Cus- Cuthbertson had last time that. Let's make sure that if we're gonna touch anything, we maximize those services. But any other monies we receive versus our bonds, that would be used if we were to accumulate that, that would be used to pay them off earlier. If we accumulated enough, we can make an extra payment. We have others in streets S D C, we have others in parks S D C, we have others in. We have similar city reserves along those ways, so we would take. If we were eleven thousand, twelve thousand dollar short, that's what we would take from. By resolution, it would have to be by resolution.
We also have like some money in an events fund too that.
Yeah, city events, there's some that we pay and we have, we've apportioned that by percentage. So what you would have that is a resolution that would reapportion.
Right.
That that money is what really what it would boil down to. And the intent would be to take only out of the reserves and not out of any of the other operational.
Got it.
So that's that's how it would be 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 worked. So in essence, we would have enough money to do what we need to do. The other part of that is that this is a twelve month lease is through a Sourcewell contract. Sourcewell is a contract uh company that the state of Oregon has approved. For municipalities to utilize. If you don't use a contract like that, in essence, you have to go out and bid. But because the state of Oregon has approved it, uh, we have the documentation to say that we can single source the. The modular unit. We don't have to go anywhere else. Now, there aren't very many people that sell these things or do these things. But it is a cost of thirty nine thousand dollars a year. So this is money you're spending on a lease and there is with the Sourcewell contract. There is not a residual, there is not a lease where you have a buyout or anything else. You are spending thirty two hundred dollars a month. For basically leasing this thing. We can lease it for more than twelve months. We can do a twelve month and a twelve month at a time, which is probably the recommendation. But you probably as a city want to be in this timeframe looking for. Bonds or other sources of funds to have a more permanent rather than paying paying for a a modular unit.
Um, where did we get the cost of site prep? Was that actually a bid from somebody or?
A part of that is from our, part of that is from our discussing with folks what the estimated costs are. The other part of that is looking at what they charge us to put this in place.
Yeah, I know they have the move move setup. I just didn't know if the site prep uh because I know that the building has to come down and the.
Right, and so that's that's part of it. And so we're we're still looking at. The, you know, we haven't gone out for anything and I think if we keep under fifty thousand dollars on this, we don't have David Davis Bacon. Wages or prevailing wages, as it were, but that's the that's the cap on that. So right now, what's public work staff are doing is finding the best mechanism. For removing that building at the lowest cost to the city without picking up staff time, a huge amount of staff time.
I thought it was the Kubota.
They really wanted or the case, they want to get the case to do it, but. Um, and they can rent it and we and Chuck does have a, he's a valid C D L, so he can certainly drive a dump truck because that's what he did. Uh, so we do have some skill on staff to take care of some things, but from a liability viewpoint, it might be best to. If someone's willing to take it down, we can also take it down, set the wood aside and do other things with the wood too. But from a public viewpoint. You probably want to. Have someone come by and give you an offer to take it away.
Yeah.
Right, you'll have a bid, so you like say we're gonna, the highest bidder gets to take the wood and please remove all of it.
And I don't think it would be a, sorry, I don't think it'd be a good use of staff Chuck's time to pull him away from his job when we're already.
I'm, I said, that's what I told them today. They're very excited about doing these kind of things, as you can well imagine.
Yeah.
Uh, but it is not a good use of their time and I need them in the, I need them focusing on water and waste.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would.
Need to be experts at that.
I would I would just say with the caveat that, you know, whoever is doing it, that they're they're insured and.
Yeah.
Bonded contract.
Yeah, that it's.
Contractors.
Yeah.
C C B.
Yeah, not just, uh, you know. Joe Joe homeowner that wants the wood for some project or something and and offers to tear it down.
Demolition is actually more dangerous than putting it up, so.
Yeah, believe it.
That we have property right next door as well. We we don't want, we don't want those issues.
Yeah.
We believe that it could come down pretty quickly uh based upon what we're aware of. And but a a person who's experienced with this would be able to take it down very quickly. They could set the wood aside.
And also without damaging neighboring structures.
Structures like Dell's house.
Yeah.
And um, uh, at the same time, be able to reclaim someone's wood, so people that would like the old wood can come. Bid for it and take it away. And that would take care of the city's uh issue with that right away. The rest of the site work would be making sure just site preparation for it. We already have the utilities.
You said possibly digging down for.
That's the other thing.
At a ground level because I, and I think that that it would be good to get bids for that just because I think for ADA issues and accessibility and. Everything, it it makes it a lot easier if they can access the building from ground level as opposed to ramps.
Ramps, part of that money right there that we have in the site, you asked me about that is part of that is for ramps and things. So we could take that money and put it towards digging down a little bit. That would be great too.
Yeah. Or and it'd be good, yeah, it'd be good to get the option.
Right.
Because if it's not too much more expense, then, you know, I think that that would be ideal over ramps and stairs and.
Agreed, and and that's what I gave marching orders to Mark to do.
You know, but if it's five times the cost, then, you know, maybe we're just like, well, we'll die, we'll just live with some ramps.
With ramps until such time as this. Till such time as the city hall can be built.
And you have to dig down for plumbing anyway, but.
But not that far, though, I don't think.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I don't know what depth is.
We we can dig down, you know, the problem, of course, also is water, so we have to deal with the storm runoff, just like everyone else in town. I can always blame the development up the street or I can blame Red Hills for water under the city hall, I guess. I'm tongue in cheek there based on some comments that have come to.
Right.
Planning commission and other places, but.
There are places around here, you dig a foot down, you get water.
It's everywhere.
It's Monroe.
Ask the nice folks in Red Hills about a foot down. I'm chuckling, but not chuckling, it's it's.
Yeah, some some of them have them real bad, real, real bad.
Yikes, I have lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what is the next step? We're looking at the proposed, the proposal here, basically. What's the next step after this?
The next step is if you are okay with us using, and this doesn't have to be a vote at the moment, you would have to pass a resolution. But if you're okay doing that, then the next step is for me to now finalize the get the deep, I have the Sourcewell contract. I have the other things, but now we have to look at the details of what we're getting. Was it actually gonna be here? Make sure these costs are exactly what they're supposed to be. Mark is getting um looking at digging down versus getting someone in.
Yeah, getting bids from.
That type of thing, so we're looking at that. I'm I asked them, this is important that we start getting those, you know, shortly. Uh, so that we could start planning for it. And then the idea would be uh to start something after the first of the year with uh beginning to tear things down and doing that. But it would need to come to you. All of that would have to come to you with our plan. So the next step for the mayor's question. Is that we're working all that information out for it to come back probably to a work session in January. Then on to council for the res- necessary resolutions to accept the contract. And also to um allocate the money from um to make sure that our budget is whole.
And by then we'll know also the if the make sure that by then we'll know if the insurance piece went through and and.
Right.
There's any other issues going forward with.
So that's it. So it's not like tonight you're deciding.
Cause we wouldn't, yeah, I was gonna say, because we wouldn't want to tie up anything if if we. Don't know that that is done and then we're also committing to, yeah.
Right. So there you go.
All right.
I hope we do find.
Our Indian burial grounds or poker guys.
Oh.
I know they did.
Okay, any other, any other questions on this particular item?
So if you're okay with that, I will proceed as I and you'll get more information in the next work session.
Like, we're all okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right, please move forward, Steve. Uh, the next item is the E Q update.
I will double check with uh. Gomber's office tomorrow morning, make sure they have it and if there's any issues or problems, then I'll C C you and make sure you're.
That would be great if I could be C C'd on it. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What can, I'm sorry, Steve, so earlier you said that the DNS had changed and that's what caused delays.
That's as far as I know.
What is DNS?
A domain name service.
Okay.
It's really, it's, that is how the internet works.
Got it.
Yeah.
It was actually uh an army issue. The army came up with it, ARPA, the Army Research Branch. And it was how to make resilient networks in case all the major cities that have all the communications got nuked.
Got it.
So so how do you make sure this communication? So they came up with an idea of redundant servers, servers everywhere and like a big spider web.
Yeah.
With points, what we call name servers. And each of those name servers have two I P addresses. And if one doesn't work, the other one does, and every server knows everyone else's through lookup tables. And so theoretically, if one server goes down. Some other server has us back.
Got it.
Your communications go through unless your provider decides to change their scheme. In which case, if you don't update, in our case, we use GoDaddy as the as the. Person that has our name, it holds the control over MonroeOregon.org.
Wow.
A gov, I mean. They're the ones that manage that, but we have another service that handles the email.
Okay.
Okay, and if Microsoft Outlook and their servers don't talk with our server. Then things don't go through and you may not be notified.
Got it. Okay, thank you for for explaining it. Got it, thank you.
Uncommon, but and everyone nowadays is right at the moment as we speak is trying to do massive security updates. For those of you that are in the I T world, uh, because we are being attacked at every single level from all over the world.
International, yeah.
You should have seen what CrowdStrike did back in the heart.
Yeah, it's it's.
Yeah, I was in Toronto on an airplane trying to get home.
Notices you get from time to time about your name being.
Found in some security breach.
Off to the dark web. That that's that's what that's what they're trying to prevent.
DNS resolutions.
It's constantly an issue and constantly something we have to keep on top of.
Thank you, Steve. I'm sorry, I was just curious.
And it really is the heart, that is the internet.
You have to go search.
Want to know what it is, there it is.
You know, you don't get the air automatically, you have to go search for it.
You have to search for it, go through logs and figure these things out.
Oh, my gosh.
I spent a lot of my career doing that.
Luckily, we've got a team that does just that.
Yeah, I, yeah, at least I have other people I can rely on to tell me what's going on. But anyway.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next item here. It's it's just a clarification, that's all it is. On the lodging tax, this is a clarification. The tax only applies to short term rentals under thirty days. That's it.
Oh, okay.
It's thirty one days a month.
It's a month rental, it's not considered short term.
Right.
So there you go.
The definition in the law is is thirty days or more is not a short term rental. Less than thirty days is a short term rental.
What I'm saying is a month of February is twenty eight days, month of August is thirty one days.
Well, it's not talking about a calendar month, it's talking about.
Yeah, thirty days.
February would be considered a short term and August would not be if somebody rents it for the full month.
I guess thirty days covers four weeks. Normally, I'm thinking like biweekly, every seven days.
That is why our short term rental requires a logbook of people that are.
Yeah.
In and out, so in case the city is, someone comes to me and says, you know, I've seen so and so. Walking their dog for the least the last three months coming from that place there. Isn't that supposed to be a short term rental? Then we can check the logbooks and see what the situation is, but it would be by someone. Coming to one of you or coming to me or coming to somebody and saying, hey, I think something's going on.
Well, and some people will do like their vacation rental. You know, they'll rent it out long term for the three or, you know, during the winter time and then like, because maybe it's a popular summer spot. And, you know, they'll do a four or five month, you know, rental and then they'll, you know. They'll have them out on their lease and then they'll do short term for the summer or whatever.
Sure. And we're not penal, we're not asking anything over thirty days is.
Yeah.
Not part of our process.
I was just curious about why.
Yeah. State law. Yeah.
Let's move on here, so. In the agenda eight dot one, I have the city events calendar that this is on the city website. We only have two upcoming events left. We've blown through a whole bunch already, last month and a half or so. So we still do have the Monroe Community Food Drive that is still going on until the end of December. So we still do have the Monroe Community Food Drive that is still going on until the end of December. You can donate canned food, you can bring it to City Hall, uh, Broadley Vineyard, I think Umpqua has got something going on, too. Or you can just take it straight to the food, the South Benton Food Pantry. So either any of those places. And as I've mentioned before, this is usually the time of year when the food pantry gets the least amount of food donations. So this is, we're helping out a little bit, so.
Always receiving quite a bit of canned food.
And Broadley's been getting quite a bit, too. So very impressed. So, yeah, this is great. Also, in two days is when the, um, the Monroe Light Parade Contest App's deadline is. So we're, the folks on city council, I'm sorry, you can't apply.
I know my wife is upset about that.
I'm very sorry about that.
She's like, oh, we gotta go apply. And I was like.
Sorry.
It's rigged.
And, yeah, elected officials are not.
Haven't done my enough yet. I don't know. I've been traveling.
Don't do it now. It's only two more.
I don't think it's gonna happen this year.
I understand that.
Hey, Mayor.
Yeah.
And you said, did the light parade make two passes around? Am I misremembering that? Okay.
There was a last minute change in the route instead of going, so it'll go down Orchard and it would go to Tenth and then down Commercial. Fire Chief, like, Monday of last week's like, the map, it's wrong. It's the, it's Ninth Street. It's not Tenth Street. I'm like, it's okay, it's okay. So I just, I, we have a, an event website. We, we put something up on there. I don't know if anybody saw it, but.
I saw it.
Okay, good.
I think it's always been a single pass through town, though, right? Just one.
That's correct.
Gets very easy to see the parade more than once. Yeah.
Chris said, he was like, if we had like planned our route, we can see.
I, I, I had it seventh at the start and then I saw it again at the end.
There you go. There you go. Oh, my, okay.
I had, I kept turning people around and trying to get past the traffic jam, racing up my driveway at thirty miles an hour.
Whoa.
So, yeah, I was standing out there with my dogs on a leash and a flashlight. No. You can go this way, you can go that way. Can't go that way.
Um, other business, uh, Budget Committee will resume. It sounds like it may resume in January, February.
I would assume it'll be our February at, at the latest.
So budget probably February. Uh, Economic Development, January. Personnel and Finance, January eighth. Be there, be square. Ordinance, we haven't decided, but it sounds like we're going to need one. Uh, Parks and Public Works will work on those. Uh, Library Negotiations, well, I don't know. Do we need it anymore?
I think now it's pending with, with SPCA and Corvallis and insurance stuff, right?
I think probably when everything is done, the mayor can probably disband it.
Yeah.
But you should probably wait until everything's finalized.
Yeah. Cool.
Uh, and then our next work session is January thirteenth. Uh, the counselors have any comments?
Um, I have a reminder to complete the nominations for the twenty twenty five CWACT membership.
CWACT.
Yep.
Thank you for the reminder.
So we need to get that to them as soon as possible. They have a lot of people shifted in and shifted out, so.
What do we, what do I need to do? I'm not aware of this.
It's, um, so we have our COG meetings and our CWACT meetings and the CWACT is the transportation. And then we have COG. They usually run, like you'll have COG and then you'll have transportation after. So it's a long day. But it's once every couple months, I think, is how they're doing it. The nice thing now is that, like, I've been able to zoom.
You used to have to go to Albany, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's been really nice to be able to zoom instead of having to go up there, but they are wanting to do, I think they want to do the next one in person, just so that we can kind of meet with each other. Um, so anyway, it's just, so if anybody's interested in that, it's about two and a half hours long.
And it's not required, but it's a voluntary, like they're looking for more members.
But there's a lot that can happen when you go. I mean, like this last time they were talking, ODOT talks to you a lot about a, about a lot of things. We have an opportunity to vote on projects and things like that now. That being said, it's great to go to the meetings. It's great to get the input. It's great to hear what's going on, but we were actually told that even though we do vote and put them in an order, that that's just recommended, but that doesn't really necessarily hold weight with what ODOT does anyway. So.
Take that with a grain of salt.
A little disappointing after serving on there for several years.
You still get to be, you still get to be squeaky, though.
You get to go. Squeak for two and a half hours. Nobody really cares. It's just a little place to vent, but, but there is some good information, so.
I have a quick question. You said January thirteenth for the work session? I show on my calendar City Monroe Public Official Law Training.
Oh, yeah. Yep, that's on my calendar, too.
January thirteenth. Official what?
It's official, it's public official training.
Training.
Like, like how, how to conduct city council meetings and.
So it is our, we're.
Yeah, it's the first part of our work session.
Okay.
And also for you newly elected individuals, you need to be sworn in.
Well, I have it on the calendar for the sixth, that five thirty.
Yes, five thirty.
Five thirty?
Yes, I want to make sure that was.
That was January sixth?
January sixth, correct.
Do all counselors, are all counselors present for that or just the newly sworn in ones?
All counselors need to be present.
Usually, don't we do it at the council meeting?
I think we want it sooner rather than later.
Get a council meeting. It's usually the first Monday, um, of the year.
Okay, I just had always remembered it being done in council meeting, I guess, but maybe that was just.
But you're doing five thirty because of the public works meeting?
For the Planning Commission.
For Planning Commission. There you go.
They're always the first quick thing, but you get your little certificates and you are official, then I send that information up to the state of Oregon.
What's the training on going back to January thirteenth? What's that training?
That is your public law training.
Oh, public law.
And it will actually be, um.
Are they finally doing that?
Yes, they are. And not only that, but you are actually one of the very first.
It was supposed to be law to do it last year.
Well, they finally.
And they kept pushing, kicking it down the, the road.
Was very much on top of it. And I said, we'd like to get it done. And so we are one of the very.
Were you in person with them?
It's in person.
Thank you.
They gave a Zoom and in person. I said, no, we want it in person.
That's awesome.
Buck or?
Uh, yes, at six o'clock.
Well, it, it was on hiatus because of COVID, right? They just.
That and they, it's, it took them a lot longer to get there. It took them a lot longer to get it going than they thought.
Got it.
Any other counsel comments?
They wanted you to do it, but then there was no education, there was no, uh.
No money to do it. No curriculum. Yes.
Uh, the mayor has one comment when he was at the light parade, he was parked next to the ODOT flashing crosswalk. The lights were not.
Oh, no.
Working very much not. So it was quite entertaining.
Very much.
You push the button, they don't work.
At my meeting.
Oh, okay. You do that. Okay. And then someone else would try it and then it would work. And then the next person, it wouldn't work. So I don't know. I actually did run into Mark and I mentioned it to him, which I hated doing because it wasn't working, but.
Such a magnetic personality. You were shorted out.
Think, I'm wondering, just, because those are, um, those are solar powered.
Oh, so maybe.
If my chicken doors have anything to say about it, it's because of the weather.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right.
It's not getting a lot of charging done.
I'll make sure I remind Mark
Okay.
to call ODOT District Two.
Okay.
The nice lady up there who always takes good care of us.
Very good.
They might be able to put a battery pack or something on it. That's what I do with my solar panels.
Yeah.
You need to crank it.
Yeah. Have the kids crank it.
And crank.
Yep. Okay, that was the only thing I had. Our next city council meeting is January twenty seventh. So that is it. There is nothing else. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.